No, I lost the date. Good evening. I would like to call the January ninth, 2025 Beaver Creek Township zoning commission meeting to order. We'll begin with a pledge and a roll call, and after that I'll do some housekeeping things before we approve the agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before roll call, if we could just have a moment of silence in honor of President Jimmy Carter's his life, actually. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
President?
Ms. Morton?
Yeah.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Geist?
Here.
And Ms. Stalter?
Here. Next is just some housekeeping things. The purpose of tonight's meeting, we have an agenda here which we'll approve in just a moment, but I wanted to make certain sense as a public meeting that all the protocols and processes were followed and that people received letters in a timely fashion to if they if this property or this what's on the agenda impacts them. And the second thing, so that was.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm seeing your head shake. The other thing that I would like to check is that all the zoning commission members received the agenda in a timely period for which to review the documents.
Yes.
Yes.
And are there any conflicts of interest?
No.
Okay. And I feel like there was one other thing. Oh, have two, three, two or more of us gathered in any way, shape, or form, social media together in a setting and had any discussion about these cases that we are about to hear?
No.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else that we usually come up like that? Okay.
Sounds like you hit them all.
All right. The agenda topics are board reorganization with a list of subtopics there and case seven eighty-nine, which is a major modification to previously approved RP PUD approval minutes and adjournment. Is there anyone who feels that agenda needs to be modified at this time?
I have one modification to the agenda due to the weather and vacation and everything else. The twelve-five minutes are not prepared.
I apologize. I didn't hear what you said.
The twelve-five minutes are not prepared.
Okay.
So you'll get those at the next meeting.
Sounds logical. Okay.
I have a question. I mean, should we reverse this and hear the case first and then the board reorganization after the case?
Thoughts?
I mean, you can.
It's fine.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. I think so, too, especially because this case was.
I've got to make a comment here, and I made the same comment last month. With these microphones on and the echo going on, I cannot understand a word that's being said.
It does have a lot of.
Feedback.
Feedback.
Up here. Does it feedback out there?
Perfect. Do we have to close the doors, maybe?
No, I think it needs to be turned down here. I mean, you're more than welcome to close the door, but. Thank you. So what was said was considering whether or not we could flip the order that's on the agenda and that feedback's gone now that we.
Yeah.
Okay.
I turned the mics down just a little bit on everybody.
And I and we're kind of all going, yeah, that's an okay thing. And I and I think it would be a good idea in part because so much time was spent even getting the procedure done. The applicant, the original applicant was very patient that evening. And so I think it would be nice of us not to take up more of his time on a topic that that was that could be talked about later.
I'm sure they'll appreciate that.
Okay.
We have no objection.
Motion to approve the change?
We'll make a motion to approve the change.
I'll second.
Okay.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
And Ms. Stalter?
Yes. All right. With that, let's hear the case.
Okay, the case before you this evening is a little different than probably things you're used to doing on a regular basis. In this case, it's a approval back to the original PUD case. So not necessarily a modification as far as after the approval, like second stage modification or anything else. This is actually modifying the original PUD. With that, I'll kind of go over why where we're at, and then we'll go from there. The process so far, the application was submitted in August of 2024. It was forwarded on to Green County Regional Planning Commission for their consideration. They voted on it on August the twenty-fourth, 2024. They voted to recommend approval subject to automotive and retail uses being excluded. The applicant has submitted now from that list what you see tonight before you. So that work's already been done ahead of time. So you have now what is currently being requested. Here's an aerial view of the property. It consists of all of those parcels outlined in red there, formerly known as the Russ Research Center. A little bit of history on that. Prior to 2008, the property was zoned light industrial, I-1. In January of 2008, the property was rezoned to its current zoning, which is PUD RP Research Park, Plain Development Research Park. Around 2019, the property was being considered by Ohio University for a campus environment. That project COVID kicked up. Ohio University changed their mind, and that project was abandoned and subsequently sold to the new owners, the ones here this evening. This is the original language from the trustee resolution, and you can see here the research park zoning classification is designed to include certain office and professional uses with research and development type facilities. This includes office, professional services that do not generate large amount of walk-in customers, laboratories, engineering offices, prototype fabrication facilities and test facilities. A small amount of related production is permitted, excuse me, and the existing uses match the definition more closely than the permitted I-1. So basically, it didn't really set forth a good table of uses or anything to use at that time. So there's been several meetings and discussions with the current owners of on their perspective, what can we do? What are we regulated? And it was very vague. So that there was something that happened before that I arrived with the township and now a lot that's happened since I arrived at the township. My recommendation to them was let's get them all listed. Let's get them before the commission and the trustees and figure out what your uses should be or shouldn't be. So that's why they are here this evening. They followed my direction as far as applying for the change, the modification to the original PUD, and that's where we're at. This was the concept plan from Ohio University. If you remember from a few months back, that northern portion there was where the Walnut Ridge subdivision has now been approved. And then the southern portion is where the Russ Research Center currently sits. So if you kind of look at what OU was proposing versus what's already there, it's pretty substantially different. But that was abandoned, like I said, after 2019. Here's a list. These next two pages are the list of current proposed uses. You have that should have that in your packets, and this is what they are. And the applicant is ready to discuss any of these with you. We've discussed them at length. Some of them you may not like, some of them you may like. So when we get around to the applicant, make sure that you have discussion with them. Make sure we talk about these uses. Make sure that everyone's comfortable with it, and then we can hear obviously from the citizens on uses they think should or shouldn't be there. That's what the whole purpose of this hearing is for tonight, is to establish those uses.
Can we ask a question?
Absolutely.
Before you make your recommendations, that list of current proposed uses, is that is what is in appendix table two A?
Most of those uses are in appendix table two A.
The current, oh, the current proposed, not what is past. Okay, got it.
Yes.
Got it. Just want to make sure I'm looking at the right list. Okay.
So my staff recommendation, I know it's a little vague on this one because I really don't have a recommendation one way or the other. I mean, this is something I think we need to discuss. I think you guys need to look at it from a perspective of either the neighborhoods, what's there, the roadways, the all that stuff. Look at them, talk about them, and make your decision. So in addressing uses for any given zoning of a property, many factors should be considered: impact on the surrounding uses, property owner rights, impact on roadways and traffic, noise, future land use needs, et cetera. All these factors should be considered when making your decision. Staff has conducted several meetings, like I've already said, with the applicant and the legal counsel to narrow down the original wish list that was submitted.
So these staff recommendations are the same as what Green County.
No, these are mine.
These are yours?
Yeah.
So planning had a different.
I think, yeah, I got their.
Okay. Yeah. I want to make sure I following.
And I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Is this the only parcel land in the township that's zoned?
Yes.
RP.
PUD RP.
Okay. And then a follow-up question to that is when it was originally approved, how do we deal with section seventeen point oh five point one? Were there any time limitations on OU as far as because according to this, if they've expired, then you're back to a regular PUD?
So OU didn't come into the picture until 2019.
Okay.
And they never filed and finished up with anything. So it was approved back in oh eight for the RPPUD, and those continued on. That was what was still going on there with the existing buildings. A lot of.
I thought 2008 was a long time ago, but that was before my time, but.
And mine as well here. So yes. But yeah, the nineteen ones and that stuff that was shown from Ohio University was never applied for and followed through.
It was never applied, so there was no time limitation on.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
So now what they're seeking to do is effectively to amend their original PUD legislation to add these.
Right.
Uses.
Okay.
And to give you an example of what was done by Ohio University, this was a workshop that they had supposedly on March nineteenth, 2019. It was a pretty aggressive concept for that area, building a university campus environment.
Well, if I recall, the one good thing that came out of it, aside from we have a new applicant in town to own, we're great, is that if I remember correctly, the flight line needed to be increased to accommodate small jets because they would be coming from Akron.
Oh, over at the Green County Regional Airport.
So that's, I guess, a good thing, right? I guess.
Now we've got some more space at our airport now.
Right, exactly. Okay, you can continue. We'll ask questions.
So basically, like I said, the applicant, I kind of mentioned this earlier, the applicant is prepared to discuss these uses with you. We've discussed them at length already, and feel free to ask her questions and try and tailor that down.
And I've got a few generic questions before we get into any specific questions. I don't know when the appropriate time to do that is, if now or.
I know I have questions, too, but do you want to hear from the applicant or do you want to hear or do you want to talk to Scott?
Yeah, I'll hold off on these generic questions, even though some have already been asked.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
All right. So you're finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's hear the applicant.
Thank you. I'm Jerry McDonald. I'm the applicant. And if you don't mind, I'd like to provide you something that hopefully after you look at this and we talk a little bit may answer some of those generic questions.
Thank you.
And I like I like making up pretty quick.
I love.
I would, Jerry, before you get started, I would like to bring up one last thing. There was some discussion early on that there might be some deed covenants, restrictions or something in those. We've researched that extensively and found none. I even contacted the OU real estate division to see if they had any in their file, found none. Applicant did title searches, found none. So I don't know if it was just something that they talked about doing and never did, but we could not find any specifics on that. So just bringing that up in case you remember.
Any other skeletons in the closet that.
They're.
Could be drag chains on us?
No, no, not at all. Don't ask.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to.
That's quite all right. You brought up that nasty deed restriction thing again.
Mr. McDonald, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you the owner or are you the agent representing?
Oh, I wish I was the owner. No, we have the representative from the owner right here. I am just the hired gun attorney from Dayton who's coming in here and trying to explain what we're doing over here. So what I gave you, the first first few pages is just nothing more than the property in more detail. I know historically and looking at these things, you see the nice colored pictures up on the on the screen, and then they disappear, and then somebody says something and you want to see it again. So I presented this so hopefully you just can have something to turn to. On page three, I just wanted to point out the future land use plan. Kind of small to see on here, but it does call for this area to be mixed use. That's kind of what we're doing. We have the research park. We are going to maintain the research park. We are going to maintain those uses because not only the history, but it's a nice marketing type of thing. I mean, this is the research park, and that is what it's known for. The Planning Commission, one of the things they said is they want to maintain this as a research park. We are not asking to change any of those uses. As a matter of fact, what we would like to do is have more research-related uses. The problem is, we've been trying that in others before us for years, and they're just not coming. And so what we're hoping now to do is by increasing some of these uses that would be consistent with the neighborhood, and that's what we're here for, we may be able to get other users, get that place more vibrant, get some more excitement about it, and then get these users, more research users in the spot. That's what the game plan is here. There are several pictures there of what the owners have done. I don't know if any of you have been out there before, but it did not look like this. They have invested over $2 million in the property thus far, which is a pretty significant investment into this type of place. There's in your packet, and again, I'm kind of going fast right now. There's a letter there from the Girl Scouts Organization and from Kathy Barlow of Sushi, supporting the rezoning. But another kind of underlying aspect of this is in the letter, they do mention about the owner and the investment the owner's making and the changes that they're seeing and the positive things that are coming in here, both for residents of the township, someplace to work, the opportunities that are available. Now, the this is the reason we're really here is when we came to Andy to say, we have this use, I think it fits into this, but we're not sure. And so I asked Andy the question. I said, what exactly is permitted? Because I see the chart, and I assume that's what it is. But then when we looked at the PUD zoning, it was the strangest thing ever in that the zoning board said, we recommend approval as submitted. And there was no uses submitted. There was a list of intended uses. And the trustee said, we approve as the zoning commission said. And so we're looking at, okay, so what is that? Well, computer and research facility. Certain professional offices. Which one? I don't know. So there was a lot of ambiguity. So originally, we presented, we talked with Andy, and we said, well, let's go and rewrite this chart. And so we listed all the existing charts, and we put what some of the current uses are that weren't listed and where we think they fall under that. And we presented that to regional planning, the executive committee, and they blew a gasket because it was a lot of uses. And they said, oh, my gosh, you have eighty-something new uses. And we're like, no, 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 we really don't. We only have about thirty new uses. The rest of them are already there. But we don't, we decided to just abandon that concept and just go with, here's the new things that we're asking for. And so what you were, and the reason we're asking for it, again, this is not the whole thing that Andy showed you about 2019. None of that is reflected in here. What's reflected in here was what was in place in 2008. So if we have a tribal bureau or a ticket agent, we can have that use there. Yeah, that's that's the kind of stuff they have. They have sonographers and clerical answering services as a use and data processing facilities. Right now on our phones, we have more information and data processing capability than they had in one of these facilities. So these are somewhat outdated uses. And so we are trying not to, well, not necessarily to update them with new technology, but just clarify them. And so what we have before you on the last page there, those are the uses. Now, a lot of these uses, like for example, the first two, computer software engineering, computer engineering, they probably fall into the existing use right now of computer services, but we weren't sure. So there's several of those that are in there. Number five, for example, arts, music, charter, STEM, trade schools. Currently, a permitted use is business, stenographic, correspondence, and typing schools and technical training schools. So again, schools are permitted. We are just trying to clarify what's, there's not a lot of typing need for typing schools these days. And so we are trying to clarify what type of schools that these schools are in fact permitted. And, you know, we are more than willing to go through any of these uses to explain why we think they they were necessary. Some of them we put in there because they were what the township has in the zoning code already that deal with manufacturing and how it was defined, and we just carried that use over. And so the language might seem like the fabrication of materials and it has that whole laundry list that we just took that borrowed that from another zoning code or another section, excuse me, of the zoning code. And with that, I'm going to be quiet and see if you guys have questions about any of these uses.
Um, go ahead.
I have some generic questions that are not directly directed to the applicant.
Okay.
That I want to procedurally understand before we get too far down the rabbit hole.
And I agree with that. Does anybody have any questions they want to ask the applicant?
Not right now. If Andy, can you put up, I mean, we have this in front of us.
Sure.
The resolution that the trustees passed that you showed us.
Before you do that, can I ask the applicant? Are you, is it getting directed? Can it be directed to him?
I just want to see.
Okay.
The original language of the trustee resolution, that's.
Okay. I do have a question, specific to the Sushi letter.
Mm-hmm.
Sushi is a, we see it within the Russ.
Yes, they are.
All right. I don't think I'm a member of Sushi. I'm employed by a local university, but I do not think I'm a member. I know I'm not an active member if I am. The other question that I have is with regard to, and that's just disclosure, okay? The next question is about essential to support companies like QQC. I don't see where QQC is defined. Who is QQC? What is that?
It's QQE. It's the.
Oh, QQE, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's the one they moved in over here on Orchard Lane three, three years ago, I think. They do microchips and microchip processing.
Oh, okay. I was curious because I didn't know what that was.
And they need more space, and it wasn't available.
We came over to you. Okay, all right. That was, that's the only question that I have to direct to you at the moment.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You'll know where to find me if you had the question.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Geist. Do you see what you need to see?
No, I just.
You just want to see it.
For reference, when I'm going down this list, because there's.
Now I'm going to go to Jeff. What did you want to?
Yeah, when I when I looked at this, it appears that what you've done, right or wrong, is combined different zones, different usages that are approved for different zones. And so there's, there's a combination of this RP PUD and what's in section fourteen, which is a different zoning. So a lot of, if not most of these additions, aren't typically in an RP zone. So my question to our staff is, can you help define what putting a PUD associated to an RP does for you? Does that open it up to any use, or is it still defined by the table A two?
So the table A two is when they're when they're kind of silent on it. If there's no other talk about uses of adding or deleting them, then the table would be binding for what those uses are.
Which is what, in effect, happened.
Correct. Well, not really, because they didn't even have the use table for RP when they did this.
So the RP use table came out after.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
So, yeah, that was kind of getting the cart before the horse, so to speak. It should have been all approved. It's kind of one doctrine, so to speak, that would have really defined this better and would have gave us a better starting point.
But the fact that it's currently zoned as an RP PUD, to me, tells me that your usages are defined by that table A two, not table, or I'm sorry, two A.
Right.
Well, yes and no. So typically, when you're those, the tables on there is for an RP, so a research park, but not specifically a research park PUD. So when you do a PUD, a PUD is its own legislation. So it is separate, is a separate essential category. So typically, for example.
undefined.
undefined.
So you could define it to be whatever you wanted it to be.
That is part of the legislation. You define it to what, I mean, between the applicant and the commission of what you believe is appropriate, and that becomes part of the legislation for this RPD.
So it's like a reset function. When you, when you, when you define it as a PUD, you have the opportunity to come in and define what your uses are.
Exactly. And that's actually typically done when you do a PUD. You see it more in like mixed PUDs, things like that. You go through and you can put within the PUD those uses which you want to be permitted or conditional. And that's something between the the board and the applicant that you can make that determination.
Now, sometimes they might just say all all uses as a and send you to a table in there. For instance, if you were doing plain development offices, you could say all uses are approved to the O one.
Interestingly enough, the majority of what they're asking for.
Is O one, yes.
Is an R.
That brings me, you brought up a point about where we were, where we are in these, on the table. Because it does look like zoning is tilting toward the office, the office category. But the PUD, for all of the other, in section seventeen, which is really what we're talking about, going through section seventeen, if there is a conditional use, we have directions for that for every classification in our resolution with the exception of RP. So sections for, so sections, let me see if I can find my notes here. If we, if we go to various criteria, it's criteria number nine, I think, in this seven seventeen point oh six, I think, is where we're going to end up landing for the decision and discussion. I think it's seventeen or six. I'm not positive. Seventeen point.
Corrective for planning unit zone.
Yes, seventeen oh six point nine. Item number, I believe it's nine. Yes, nine, says that any permitted conditional accessory uses excluded from the proposed development are in accordance with seventeen, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. And.
Go to nine, seventeen oh six point nine.
Oh, nine, sorry.
Okay. No, seventeen point oh six point nine.
I know. Sorry.
Seven, six, nine, one.
There we go.
Okay, go to item number nine on the next page.
There we go.
You see, as permitted, that that one right there, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, none of those are research park PUDs.
Seventeen, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
The way I know that is I went to the table of contents. It was faster to read that list than there. So it was a little, it was a little confusing to me. So.
Because there's nothing in the zoning code.
So can I give you maybe another example that maybe will help it clear it up? I don't know, but.
I don't know. It's just something to keep track of when we get to that level. I think if we get to a point where we're half. I think if we get to a point where we're have to have a discussion about the conditional uses thereof for any of that list, we're not going to have any direction for it. That's my point.
So Ann, is that getting at the same point I was, that all of these here are not in the research park table?
Correct.
They don't have to be, and that's the, that's the point of the PUD. That's, they would, if they were, if there was no other conditional uses defined in the legislation for the PUD, you would look to the table. So for example, if, again, I was going to use the easier one, if you had a, a business PUD, okay? Then you would, but didn't define the permitted and conditional uses, then you would only look at those that are within the table.
I see what you're saying.
But when you do a PUD, you have the ability to change those, to add or to delete those. I don't think any of you all were here when we did the, the Valley.
Valley Springs.
Valley Springs, but we went through the list. I don't know if you remember, we spent like two different meetings determining which ones we thought were appropriate for that PUD or not. So that's what you're doing here is you're looking at, if there were none in the legislation, you could only look at what was in the table.
Let me pull the thread on what you just said. So what determines appropriateness? If the table doesn't define that for you?
That's what you guys are doing to look to see, does it fit within the, you know, the neighborhood? Does it fit within, you know, you're making a determination. That's what, that's what you guys are here to do today. Do you think that that's a good fit for this particular?
This is one of those rare times where you get to just base it on your own experience and, and knowledge.
And the community.
Yeah.
Is there any way to see the, in his application, and I've seen this several times, confirming existing 15 categories? Well, there's more than 15 categories in the table. So I'd like to see what 15 categories he's
He's real tiny, it's marked.
Pardon?
Isn't it in here in the back, marked in these?
Would it be okay if the applicant, I think he can answer the question. He knows his, he knows his, he knows his table pretty well. He's been playing the game for a while now.
I don't know what's 15.
No, that's, that is, that's not what I'm referring to. What I'm referring to specifically is the zoning resolution. And as I said, they said, we approve as submitted. Well, the zoning resolution didn't have a list of uses. They had instead with Attachment D and Attachment L, which pretty much say the same thing, which says, here are the uses. And if I can handle this.
I mean, that's where Is that not what we have on the display right here?
That's a little bit different. I'm not really sure what that one is. This is the actual resolution. Or this is the application based on the resolution. And those were the 15 uses that were already in place.
Okay.
And then oddly, you see that they are requesting a daycare center and other things, which is not on the list at all, but it's in the resolution. So
Okay.
Computer service application.
So now we kind of know where the lay of the land is here for just a minute. I need to go back because that list of 10 items for that section that I said, which takes us to, what was it? 17.06.9, I think?
17.69.
Okay.
Page 107.
When I read through this, based on the application, this, just so that we are all on the same page. When I read the, the agenda says, case 789 to major modification to previously approved RP PUD. So when I follow through the language in 17 about major modifications, I am directed to 17, oh, give me a minute, the one that has like 16. We're very familiar with it. We've been using it for a long time.
17.07.5? Is that what you're talking about?
Um, is it five? It is.
It's 06, 17.06.
Nope.
Specific site plan application?
Nope, give me a minute. We use, we use it all the time. Standards and criteria for specific site plan approval is on page 117, and it is 17.07.12.
But this is not the specific site plan approval.
But if it's a major modification, that's my question, just to make certain that we all understand that the process that's followed, major modifications, as you start back at go, are at the beginning and walk all the way back through the process.
So maybe we need to go back further than that, so I can remind you again
Yes.
that this is not the major modification to a specific site plan. This is a modification to the enabling PUD legislation. So it, it's a different animal.
Square zero.
Yeah, than you're used to.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all following why we're moving from one, from that point over to this.
Right. If it was a, a, a site plan modification, we would be under those rules.
Okay.
But this is going back even before that, to the original legislative PUD.
All right.
Correct?
Okay.
And that's what, when we spoke today on the phone, I'm like, this is a different animal than we're used to because usually we're hearing site plan modifications.
I understood that. I just want to make sure the board is clear. That, that's why I wanted to make sure everybody's clear. If you're trying to follow the codes, that's why we're on that page. Jason, do you have questions?
I think Jeff still has one.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, real quick, and maybe you
You don't bother me at all.
Maybe you already talked to this, but I'm, I'm looking at 17, 12, too. And it defines are put permitted in conditional uses?
Yes, but not for RP's, right?
So an R is different from an RP?
Yes, I think so. Am I correct with that?
Yeah, R is residential.
Yes.
Okay. Now, one other thing to keep in mind, when you look at the table and you look at our codes, we have had major changes in zoning classifications since this was originated.
Documented where?
It would be documented, help me out here.
For the uses?
We have business district now. We have an overlay. We have more classifications than we are showing on our table. Just so we all know, that some things are not in alignment. So you looked at the office one, and that's the one that I kind of felt like it was leaning towards as well. And the reason that I'm bringing that up
So Schedule 2 was, had a complete revision, 1022 of 18?
But does it have all the classifications on it?
All of which classifications?
I'm talking about two, Table 2A.
Yeah, and then Table
But Table 2A does not have all those on it, does it?
Table 2A was revised also in 18.
So you've got 2 and 2A that you look at.
Yeah.
So when I look at 2A, there are not a carryover on the top schedule of permission, permitted principal uses, O1 through the PUDIC. There are three, three things that aren't on the heading there.
Yeah, you mean right here?
Yes.
Yeah, those were just, from what I understanding, well, those were left open for future categories.
Okay, all right, got it.
Yeah, they were updated. So when this was approved in '08, this was again modified, the use table was modified in 18.
Okay.
So I think that's what you're
I was. I was just concerned that the classifications were not represented on that Table 2A.
Oh, I got you.
That was my concern.
I got you, okay.
Okay, got it. Now, when now that we know which, what process we used, when the request for the changes on Table 2A, have they been compared to the various Articles 10, 11, 13, 14? Have they been compared at that level? So if we look at Article 10, specifically the intents and uses. I'm just making sure that Don can probably stop my mind from this direction right here and now. But I don't want us to get down to the end of this and go, oh, my gosh, this isn't zoned properly.
Well, we're not changing the zoning.
I know we're not. But if we put conditions or we put a list on here that leans toward a different zoning classification, is that problematic?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right.
That's why, and that's why they're here to add those things now. And it's its own, this legislation, it's its own classification, and it applies only to this property.
So we wouldn't need to compare it to those other articles?
Correct.
Got it, for intents and uses. All right. All right. One of the questions, do you have, Jeff?
I'm still a little struggling with the fact that we've defined what a research park is. And then through the addition of a pub, we can open that up to whatever we want it to be.
Okay, all right.
That's just how PUDs work, and that's why the, that's why developers and entities typically like PUDs because they can work together to
Flexibility.
For flexibility, to figure out those things. If, if something, again, maybe it's all research park, but somebody wanted daycare because they wanted these people to have daycare, you could add that to, to this particular. But it only applies to this PUD.
Can you get just the daycare example? I was reading in his letter there that, you know, the daycare use was specifically stated for No, no, but I'm, in this document here, it was primarily for those who work at the, at the research park, not a commercial daycare center. So how do we differentiate that? I mean, can we, in the PUD, as far as, yeah, you can have a daycare board, but it's for employees of the research park only?
Well, what you're looking at now, and I think part of the reason they're coming in to modify it is because we're looking at something many years later. And so now you can look at this in the context of what you believe fits there now.
Today.
Today. You are able to do that, and they are able to do that. That's part of what you are being asked to do today. Not necessarily what their intent was back then, because they're, that's why they're seeking to modify the legislation now so that you guys can look at these things now and say, I don't think this is a good fit here, or I think this is a good fit here.
For that specifically, what the original intent was for that was to have that kind of research community, everybody going in there. There was even a, like a restaurant for people on site and, you know, to kind of self-service that. Well, that's not came to that level of fruition, so to speak. So it's just different than the original vision.
It's going to be tough for me to dovetail these requested uses with regional planning review. I mean, I don't understand, you know, their recommendation was only approve uses that maintain character intent of a research park, are compatible with research and development, and with the condition that retail and automotive uses be excluded. Well, I mean, you know, number six, automotive customization.
There was some, there was some talk about that, and I think that's one you should probably talk with the applicant on as far as where that came.
I mean, there's a lot of these here that I'm trying to justify in my mind, how is this related to research and development?
And I think that probably the easiest way maybe for you all to do this, it's just a suggestion, is maybe kind of go down this list, and maybe some of them, it's easy. Okay, this, I think this is appropriate. But when you get to one that you have a question about, then, then you guys discuss it. You can discuss it with the applicant and then make that determination.
I think we'll get there. I think, I think we're getting there faster than you realize. I do. My question then, I mean, I have some other questions that are in general, but maybe we can do that after we hear the public and that sort of thing. So my question to you right now is, would you recommend that we go down that list prior to hearing from the public or listen to the public and then go down the list?
My recommendation would be listen to the public and then go down the list.
That's what I would say.
Is that all good?
That would.
Okay, so at this time, everybody's questions are so far answered. I would like to go ahead and open the public portion of the meeting. And so we usually start this, y'all, with those who are for the application. Then we listen to all those, and then we do any that are against the application. And then anybody that has anything that is not either for or against, but you would like your voice heard. So could I see a show of hands of those in the public that would like to speak for the application? Okay, one. And those who are here to perhaps speak against the application?
Maybe the third category.
In the third category? And are you, are you by yourself? So we're, two people. Okay. So we're talking about hearing three people. We have a big list to go down through. Do you think five minutes each sounds reasonable? Okay, five minutes each it will be. So when you come up to speak, you come to the podium, you direct us, you give us your name and your address, and then you have five minutes. And do you need a clock? Do, do you need timing, Melissa, or we're just going to eyeball?
Just kidding, it's my phone.
Okay, when her phone stops, she will tell you you're done. Okay.
I will not take five minutes of your time.
You may.
My name is Pete Bales. I live at 2391 Forest Oaks Drive in Beaver Creek. I am the owner of two small businesses in Beaver Creek, and I'm also the vice mayor of the city of Beaver Creek. So it's nice to be on this side of the podium tonight and not where you're sitting. I've, I've looked at this application from many different perspectives. And I actually had an opportunity to take a tour of the site because one of my small businesses is looking to expand and looking for some flex space. So I took a tour of the site and got familiar with it. And one thing I think about, when I think about the future of Beaver Creek, is I think about the reuse of our current commercial structures. We've got a lot of them. And I don't take rezoning. I understand this isn't rezoning. This is different, but I don't take that lightly. I think it's something to really consider strongly. But I also think that we have to move forward with the times and understand what's going to be viable in certain places today and in the future compared to what was there in the past. And so when I looked at the kind of hard to understand current language that exists on what's appropriate and what's not, and the requested uses of the applicant, I had the feeling that most all of these requested uses seem perfectly fine for where our business climate is taking us. Flex spaces, research spaces, indoor storage spaces for certain things, and it all just kind of made sense to me. And then I looked at the surrounding community too and compared it to what could be allowed if this was all office space and so forth, compared to what the applicant's requesting. And I really felt like the impact would be potentially lower with a lot of these uses than if that, those buildings were packed with, with office, offices. So, you know, with that said, I'm in favor of the applicant's requested uses and look forward to your conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on.
Amended and allow me to speak further?
Four? Are you four? You make home?
This will be real quick. I will not take five minutes.
You may.
I am John McCants. I live at 2695 Diamond Cut Drive in Beaver Creek. I sit on the airport authority board for Green County. And one of our primary tenants on the airport, who does research and development in the aviation area in surveillance and things of that nature, has, does have workspace in the research park. We are in the planning stages as the airport authority board in doing our master plan for the airport. And as it was aforementioned, the extension of the runway was before my time. But that was also in, in concert with conversations with Ohio University. So we anticipate in this next master plan period, which is a 10-year period, a lot of growth at the airport. And one of the functional things that we're interested in, and I'm the, the subcommittee chair for planning and development for the airport. uh, from, from the board perspective. Uh, one of the things that we're really interested in is increasing the flow-through of, and the resident of having a, uh, a, a corporate, not flight department, but, uh, turboprop and jet services that are resident to the Green County Airport. Because that then takes us up to another echelon when it comes to funding from the FAA and from the ODOT and our funding stream that comes to the airport. One of the inter, one of the integral parts of the master plan is to look at the, at the surrounding area for the, the infrastructure to support airport operations and entities that would want to come to the airport, have facilities near the airport, and then hangar their airplanes at the airport. So, for that reason, uh, we're very inter, I, I can speak for the board and say that we are interested in seeing a, a positive, uh, conclusion to this to, to, to allow the, the, uh, research park to accommodate more businesses. So that then, that gives us an opportunity to support them at the airport. I look forward to any questions.
Does your planning account for specific uses for the research park? Or are you just...
No, no, we don't. We, uh, from a standpoint of the, of the, uh, the planning and development and the master plan, uh, the master plan is, we put a RFP on the street uh, for a, a entity to develop the ten-year master plan for the airport. In doing that, one of the principal, uh, aspects of that master plan is to look at, from a regional perspective, at all the properties in, in, in close proximity or reasonable proximity to the airport, to determine how those could be marketed by the airport to bring more business to the airport.
It's more of a growth thing?
It's more of a, and that's really, in my role on the board, that's, that's my vision. That's what I'm responsible for, is to look at that. So, that's, that's what we do. Yeah. Anybody else? Thank you.
Um, anybody else four? Soshi. Are you the letter writer?
Pardon?
Are you the letter writer for Soshi?
A letter writer? No, I'm not, Kathy Barlow. My name is Karen Manzo. I am the vice president of finance and contracts at Soshi. My address is three-two-one-seven Delaney Street, Kettering, Ohio, four-five-four-two-oh. We are in support of the applicant. It would be nice for them to be able to open up and have more businesses. The building in, we are in right now, we are basically the only applicant, or the only occupant. And, um, it would just be nice to have a more vibrant research park business area. So, we support the applicant.
So, you're currently in a research park?
Yes.
Okay.
And very lonely. Thank you.
Well, we're glad you came to see us. We're usually lonely here too.
Thank you.
Anyone else four? Okay, those against? And those with neither?
Good evening. I'm Sue Gord Hammer. I live at eighty-nine James River Road in Beaver Creek Township. Um, so our property, uh, was notified of this, um, major modification. And, um, I appreciate having the opportunity to come and look, um, at the requested uses. I would encourage you to pay a lot of attention to anything that has noise impacts on the neighbors. We hear virtually every night a security system going off in the research park right now. High pitched hum. And so, when I think about noise, I think about data centers. And back in, what, this was two thousand eight that it was approved? A data center back then is very different than what a data center now can be. High water consumption, constant hum of computers to support, you know, processing processors that, um, are very invasive in terms of, on neighborhoods. So, I would be very, very disappointed if something like that moved in. And I don't foresee that when I look certainly at the requested uses. But I am concerned when I think about, uh, the list of approved uses. My one question on the list of current uses, well, actually two. One is, um, when it lists the mobile food trucks and trailers, um, business. And then in parentheses, it says, "Storage of trucks and trailers." So, it's unclear to me if we're talking about just a storage facility or if we're talking about having a mobile food court. I don't know. You know, sometimes you wanna be able to walk to a food truck from your house, but... So, that seems loose to me. And then there's a veterinarian with kennels listed non-boarding.
I'm sorry, which one?
Veterinarians with kennels, non-boarding, number thirty.
Yep.
So, I have no problem with a veterinarian, um, being there. A non-boarding facility would be important to me. But I look at like number thirteen, which is daycare. And I have nothing against daycare centers, but I don't want a dog daycare center. I don't wanna see emerging, right, of, of uses. And suddenly we have dogs barking, um, behind our house at all times. Um, so, noise, um, any odors from manufacturing, um, that would not be, um, welcomed either. Um, and this is an aside, but that section of Indian Ripple is fifty miles an hour. I know you guys are not in charge of speed limits. But the more businesses that go into the research park, it's already a challenge pulling out onto Indian Ripple from, um, our road onto a fifty mile an hour. And I would encourage the township to reconsider that speed limit and lower it. Cause we're the only section at fifty miles an hour right now. It's dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to speak?
I would have nothing to add to her comment, but I'd echo her.
It's a safe zone for you?
Noise and the impact on the neighbors.
All right.
And certainly the squeezing of the alarm system.
Is there anyone else in the room that is, um, from the public that would like to speak? Hearing no one else or seeing anyone else of interest to come up to the podium, I'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. All right.
Excuse me.
We are almost ready to go down that list. I have a question to the applicant that just came to my mind. I believe it was on page three or four. You spoke about the land use plan. My question is, which land use plan are you referring to?
Uh, that would be the Beaver Creek Township, uh, future land use plan?
The proposed future land use plan?
No, the one, the one in existence.
Just checking, just checking.
And I think it's two thousand twelve, so I'll be the first one to say...
I just wanted to make sure we were all talking about the same thing.
We, we discussed that early on.
Okay, all right. Good. I'm done.
With into shape.
That was my only question to you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's, um, let's go down the list. Hold on. Should we go down that, uh, seventeen oh six point nine? I think we do that after we do the list. What do you think?
Uh, I, I would just try, try to start tackling the list and see where you come out.
The one that has the, the ten, yeah. The ten. Yeah, we'll do this at the very end. Does that sound logical? Okay. All right, let's do the list, guys. And making sure it's under requested uses. But we're gonna do this requested uses list first, right? I wanna make sure that the document that the applicant gave to us with the blue writing is the same list...
I'll make sure that it matches the one. There's forty-two.
Forty-two of them?
Yep.
Go to the next page on your slide, go to the next slide. Okay, all right. I just needed to have my eyes in one spot. Okay, computer software engineering. Was that already on table two?
Notwithstanding the hum from computers, I don't see an issue.
Any issues?
I don't have a problem with that one.
Computer engineering.
No problem.
Conference center?
The requested lists.
Oh.
Pardon?
She asked which list they were looking at.
Oh, this list here.
We're gonna, yeah, because it's not, some of them are not on table two. Jeff has already crosswalked them between a different section.
If we do this, do these get added on to table two?
No, these become the ones for this property.
It's a unique definition for this RP pod.
Conference centers.
It's not gonna be described or documented anywhere other than this application, correct?
I think so.
Well, the legislation for this, yes.
The legislation. The text, uh, text amendment, is that...
Well, it's an amendment to the PUD. It's not a text amendment within our code.
Got it.
That's why the number is dash two instead of like an A or whatever. Cause it's a modification to the original case.
We're on, oh, we're on number three, conference centers?
I'm not sure about that one. I had that circled. I... With something like this, can you...
It's actually already on table two, eh?
I think it's currently has a conference center in it.
It's, it's, it's in...
It was confusing, which is it says conference, the permitted use is conference center services.
Right.
And, and so we said, well, I think that's a conference center, cause I don't know what a conference center service is. And so it was just one of those things that was why we are here tonight.
Okay, so with this, are we allowed to put like parameters around sizes or no, like square footage? I mean, what's a conference center service? And then...
That's what I was gonna ask.
You could, there's, I mean, there's other things in here that have square footage requirements.
Or you could make it a conditional use, which means if they chose to have that use, they would have to come in to you all and get that permit for that.
I have no problem with a conference center for tenants, if they're, need a conference or whatever. But a retail, uh, conference center that's rentable, you know, there's some other things on here that, that's what I'm... Pardon? No.
So, conditional use?
I would put a conditional use on that, though.
Conditional?
Conditional use?
I'd agree with that.
Okay. Appliance repair services, not outside storage, with no outside storage.
Here's my first one that I question what this has to do with research and development. That's, as far as...
Well, a lot of these don't have anything to do with the research and development.
Well, yeah, and that's why, going back to regional planning, they're, you know...
We're redefining, Bob.
I was gonna say request, but I couldn't get the word out.
Bob, we're redefining real time what we mean by research and development.
Well, that's what I need clarification on. That's why I asked the question. I don't know what appliance repair services has to do anything with research and development.
Doesn't.
Intent. Mr. McDonald, please?
Um, it doesn't have anything to do with research and development. Period.
Right.
Um, what we're looking at is, it's the use that may benefit the people around. And again, we are kind of thinking of the research and development park and the mixed use type of thing. So, we wanted to have something maybe more. Again, this isn't research park uses. This is the Russ Research Center, this area uses. So, that's why some of these things are, they're clearly not research, bakeries.
Right, that's why. I, I had a lot of circles on my list.
Yeah, but then again, it's also a type of thing that says, well, you know, if they had a bakery there, that, you know, residents might like that, you know, may, make it a more vibrant place. That was the, the, the train of thought on that. So, that is why some of these uses have nothing to do with research park.
Yeah, it's almost like we're trying to turn this into a strip or a commercial.
Or an office.
Yeah.
Actually, what, what, what it really is, is, is it's somewhat of a mixed use, which would be consistent with that.
It is exactly a mixed use.
Which is consistent with the, the master use plan, the land plan, like the existing one. And, you know, the, the concept again is that the whole research part is not coming to fruition. And so, perhaps if we tried to make it into more of a mixed use, we could then build up that, the historic uses of that. Because a lot of these buildings are really suited, uh, currently for research and development, more so than these other uses.
So, so carrying that thought forward, do, do we, do we wanna open this up to a mixed use? Or are we, are we, do we wanna constrain it to the uses that are there and serving the uses that are there, which was the original intent of the research park?
Well, I mean...
You know, daycare, you know, was there for the research park, right? It wasn't for else?
And this is a question I've asked before. Does a PUD, the existing, transfer with ownership, even though nothing was done on it? Why, the applicant, it does?
I learned from this process that it is. It's actually a code in here, but you could find it.
It's just, it's, it's a zoning, just like if you had agricultural, it stays that until somebody changes the zoning itself. So, the zoning stays.
So, I, I don't understand why we're not changing this to a mixed use PUD.
That's my point exactly, Bob.
That's what I'm asking. Might not be office, but it might be mixed.
Because they've chosen to go the route to amend the current and seek these potential uses versus rezoning the property. It's just a choice that the applicant made.
We are keeping, the request is to keep all the current uses, the research development uses, and then add some additional.
And there's some, like in our chart, that, that aren't necessarily... I mean, you have real estate and development management related services that's already in RP one table. You have, uh, travel bureau and ticket sales in the RP one table. I mean, those aren't necessarily research park either, but they're listed in the table. So, but really...
Even though they're listed in the table, they have no bearing on a PUD, is what you're telling me? Because that's a separate entity.
Well, the reason I said that was because we're, we're comparing it to the table.
So, let's stop for a minute. Cause I, I hear what you're saying. I get what the concerns are. Let's try to get through the list. And let's say conditional use, if we have questions about intent, we say question about intent on this one, and then we can have more conversation as we move forward. But let's try to get through the list.
So, we're doing conditional use on appliance repair? Is that where we're at?
No, we're saying intent question. Conditional, yeah, it could be conditional use if you want it to be...
Well, I mean...
Conditional for what?
I don't know.
I just gotta figure out what number we're on. We're on four.
We're on number four.
Appliance repair?
Intent. It's an intent question.
Okay.
Okay.
Number five's fine. That goes with research and development.
Number five.
I'm sorry, what are we doing with number four?
Number four, we're just marking beside it, intent for research development, question.
And, and what do, what does that mean?
It just means we're questioning it. We're still questioning it.
So, we're not ready to decide on it? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
We're not ready to accept it. We have accepted one and two thus far. Okay, number...
One, two, and three, conditional.
Number three is conditional. One and two are fine.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Yes.
Right?
You're saying one and two are permitted uses, that three is a conditional use.
Right, right.
Yes.
And four, you have a question on intent?
Right.
And now you're on five.
And now on my five. Art music, charter, STEM school, straight, and in parentheses, it says conditional use.
That's what they're applying for, a conditional use on that?
Okay, so, conditional use. We're good with that? We're good with that? Okay, automotive customization, including wraps, glass installation, tinting, security, and audio systems. You get the idea. I don't have to read that whole thing.
I would say no on that, but...
Yeah, I would agree no on that.
Say what on it?
No.
And why?
Falling back to, I don't know what that has to do with research and development.
So, it's an...
Well, to me, that's a question then.
Well, yes and no. A stronger no around it is probably something to do with what, chemicals or, or is it just intent?
I think noise impact.
Noise?
Traffic environment, all, it could be all of those.
Yeah, security and auto, audio systems are gonna be out there testing them.
Okay, so we're saying no on six?
Uh, that's my, that's what I...
You're making notes of these?
Go with.
Are you making notes of these stuff?
Bakeries and wholesale, number seven.
Those are right out of the industrial.
Flavors.
I mean, wholesale, meaning not open to the public or non-retail?
Oh, you know, I don't know.
I mean, can you, I mean, there's tons of wholesalers. Well, we're a wholesale operation.
Those are typically I-one and I-two.
If anything, I would go conditional on that then.
Any other conversation about it? Conditional. Okay. Conditional, okay, banquet and event facilities, conditional use.
I guess I'm okay with conditional use, I would almost say no.
That's what we do with conference center too, they're so close, I mean, they're just so close.
A banquet and event center, what kinda, you know, we don't know what kind of events gonna happen there, you don't want a huge.
Yeah, party, what's that?
Party, wedding, I mean, the noise.
That's why you're taking a look at it in that conditional use thing when they, when they start.
Okay, catering and service, conditional use.
Yeah, I mean, they have it as conditional, I mean, that's the minimum I would want on both of those banquet and.
I mean, it would be easy to go, okay, there, is there intent question there too, right?
Right, I mean, but that's part of the conditional use, I mean, they're gonna have to explain the intent for the condition.
You guys good with that, Rick and Jeff?
So, C, conditional for nine?
Yes.
Seven, eight, and nine would be all conditional.
Yeah.
Yes, ten, civic, social, fraternal association, meeting rooms and offices.
And that's straight out of the table.
Okay.
So.
So.
I don't have an issue with it.
It's permitted, then?
It is per two A.
Okay, contract construction services, general conditional use, provided no outside storage of construction equipment. Now, outside storage of construction equipment does not say that construction equipment won't be there, it means that you will have, you could possibly come back with another building to house stuff in, right? So, is that where that conditional is coming from, then?
Well, and what constitutes, uh, like you say, you have construction equipment coming in, conditional use, provided no outside storage of construction equipment, when does it become storage and when does it become parked? Someone drops something off, it's parked here, we're not gonna get to it for three months.
I don't know, it does have conditional use.
Generally, it becomes storage after it's been outside for twenty-four hours, that's.
Is that the, I, I don't know what the legal term is, I mean, that's what my.
That's our understanding as well, is.
Is twenty-four hours?
Twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Well, it says conditional use, so you're against that, then, totally, the not conditional?
Yeah, I think it goes back to the whole thing we talked about with, uh, the CD and with.
I can't hear what she's saying.
I mean, when we're putting a school potentially down there, I don't know.
Can you repeat yourself, Kristen, because Jeff couldn't hear you?
No, I just, I said no.
Okay, that's clear, that's clear, that's clear.
Kristen has spoken.
Well, because of safety, that was not, that's where I was with that, going back with, I mean, construction vehicles on and off that street, speaking of how we were talking about the speed limit, plus the potential of the new high school being there, I just, I don't think construction, any kind of services should be permitted in that use. I mean, it goes back to the whole thing of what we talked about with, with the original, how it was proposed, and the, you know, the traffic, the noise, the environmental impact.
Okay, any more conversation about that, support, yes, no, yes, no?
I don't have an issue.
No, no, okay, number twelve.
What are we leaving as conditional use?
No, I think she said, Kristen said no.
Well, I know what Kristen's.
I said no.
What do you say, Bob?
Bob, what do you say?
Why do I have to go?
You are sitting beside her.
What does everybody else say, that's what?
Well, they said they, they didn't have any problem with.
Yeah, so typically, that's a B four or I two, I, I one or I two, so it's really a stretch, I think.
Okay.
So, are we, we're either saying no, or are we leaving it as a conditional use?
No.
Okay, I just wanna make my mark here.
Would, would you go with, Bob?
I went with no, like the rest of them.
She's sitting beside her, he knows he better agree, okay, dance and gymnastics, number twelve?
I would say no on that, I don't know what.
Okay, but we.
That's like the top school.
Yeah, I mean, those are one of those things that, uh, these types of spaces are very, um.
They're open, they're receptive to that, like, I mean.
All right, I mean, that's fine.
Like Topsh Gymnastics, the one that's over there by the tater top.
May I ask a question about this, then, in?
By where?
Number five, art.
Isn't that what it is, I was just saying Bob or the other gymnastics places, just to give them an example.
And I, I think we need to keep in mind that, um, where is this place located?
It's in the strip.
I'm drawing.
Okay, all right, we need to keep in mind that we're in the township and not in the city.
We'll have that conversation when we get this list over here.
Okay.
We can go back and change them, we're still, we're just discussing.
I mean, we've had the discussion.
We're just getting through the list.
Okay.
Okay, get through the list. Okay, number twelve, dance and gymnastics, when I look at item number five, art, music, chart, STEM school, trade schools, under conditional use, how is that different?
It's not, I agree.
So, shall we make it conditional since it's already been conditional, so number twelve is conditional?
Okay.
Daycare.
Conditional.
Conditional. Fabrication, processing, packaging, and manufacture of articles or merchandise from the following previously prepared materials, bone canvas, what do you think?
Conditional use.
Well, the conditional use.
Is there no use for daycare? Okay, I'm sorry.
They have that as a conditional use, um. Why no?
It goes back to noise, in my opinion, I mean, it's in the neighborhood. And we're gonna build more houses in the whole back area of this section.
Paint, paper, plastics. What'd you say, Kristen?
She says no.
No, cuz noise and again, safety and whatever, I mean, we're putting a whole nother plot of houses in that back side, it's gonna butt up to the back of this whole facility.
Thoughts?
Also comes along with, uh, smells and fumes coming off it and hazardous waste possibly being in there.
So, by throwing it out, is, are there instances where there might be some fabrication processing that doesn't violate those concerns? To where if we kept that as a conditional, we could?
Wax, that'd be about it, maybe paper.
Wax, did you say?
Wax.
Wax?
That's one of the things they asked, I said which one, I said wax.
Well, I know, but I mean, a candle company's gonna have a, a lot of smell coming out of it.
They probably smoke it.
Yeah, I mean.
Been to Leesburg, Ohio, like candlelight factories, can smell it for miles.
No, then.
I hear a no over here, down here, no over here, I feel like an auctioneer at the moment, what'd you think, Rick?
I, I think we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater, if that's the case for every one of these options here, to where there's gonna be a violation to the, you know, smell, smell, the sound, the traffic, then, okay, I'm okay, cancel me, but do we know that?
No.
Without looking at an application? Might there, might there be an instance where?
And they have it as conditional use already.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with you, I mean, uh.
Okay, there's two of us.
Yeah, Rick, Rick.
Well, they, uh, well, I'm thinking through this, I guess it's, it's kind of, I'm concerned that somebody's gonna say, oh, it's a conditional use, yes, but we approve the conditional use under, you know, paint and processing being done there.
But by approving a conditional use means they have to come in with a specific application.
I understand that, but my concern is that they're gonna come back and say, well.
You need to make the automobile.
Conditional means conditional.
Customization, I think what he's saying is number six, then, if you agree with this one and you make it conditional, then you're gonna have to make number six conditional, I think that's what he's saying.
Well, we already said we were gonna take six out.
No, what I'm saying is, there are some things there that could probably fall into the, okay, I, I don't think that'd be a problem, you know, manufacturing that there, my concern is that the whole list is there, so if that list wasn't there and it's just that fabrication, processing, packaging, manufacturing, period, and then we put conditional use in there, that kinda doesn't, but, I think it's broad to.
We'll take that, this, this was one when I talked, I said we rewrote language from something else, so we would.
So, you're okay redefining it to just be generic?
To put that period right, right where, uh, Mr. Porter said.
And get rid of all the instance, all the examples?
Of articles or merchandise, period?
Yeah, that's where I would suggest it. Uh, right after mer, um.
After merchandise.
Merchandise.
And then make it a conditional on top of that, that way we don't got somebody coming in here.
Exactly.
Saying, hey, yes, but you did it on a conditional of a, of a paint or something like that.
Okay.
Are you, are you okay with that, Kristen?
Well, that, then that opens it up further to, they could do more stuff then, besides what they have listed, right?
But it would be conditional.
But it's still conditional, they have to come in and say, all right, I'll give it. Are you sure?
So, that's conditional too.
Okay, all right, gymnasiums and athletic clubs.
Yes, cuz that goes back to the whole dance and gymnast.
So, didn't we say those were conditional?
Yeah, we did, I mean, I think that should be a conditional use, again, I, it seemed more of a retail operation than a.
Health studios, inside activity only.
What's, what's the difference between a gymnasium, athletic club, and a health studio?
So, it'd be like.
What's a health studio?
LA Fitness versus, like, Club Pilates, or a yoga place.
Or what about, does that include, uh, like, physical therapy offices and massage centers too? Is it like an all encompassing thing that you were thinking?
I think it's broad enough that we just put conditional on it.
On which one?
I, I got a little bit lost if we were on fifteen or sixteen.
Oh, we're on sixteen.
We were on sixteen.
What did we say with fifteen, we said?
I think we're trying to figure out the difference between the two and discussing them together, yeah.
The gym is different than a yoga studio.
Okay.
Conditional.
Conditional.
Well, couldn't it be an athletic club? So, okay, that's conditional, health studio?
Like East Florida is an athletic club.
Fifteen and sixteen.
Okay.
Number seventeen?
HVAC, and plumbing.
Excluding welding, I don't know anything about that business, you guys, either it works when I push the button or it doesn't, so if you want to, uh.
I could tell you there's a lot of big trucks that you carry with HVAC that will have to park there.
Generally vans.
Yep, big vans.
I couldn't hear a word she said.
She said the vans are big that you park out there.
She said there's a lot of big trucks generally.
I.
Although it says no equipment, there's equipment on the trucks.
No outside storage or, or of equipment, so you're saying you can park vans? You can park vans on any one of these, any one of these businesses?
Correct.
Is there, are there any chemicals in any of that?
For instance.
Yes, Freon.
For instance, when you talk about vans, um, the library has space there, correct? And they have, uh, a vehicle that they take back and forth, their library stuff.
I mean, that happens today, right?
Yeah. How?
It's, it's a.
There's equipment on the vans, there's equipment in the vans, there's all sorts of stuff, there's ladders, there's all sorts of things.
You said they were big vehicles at first, so that's.
Well, they are pretty big, they're not like a fire truck big, but they're about that size.
And so is the one that's for the library. What I'm saying is.
What do they have on the van at the library?
I don't, we're talking. Are we talking size or are we talking what's in them?
We're talking the equipment that's on them, that's what I'm saying.
So.
So, there's a difference between a van from the library and a van that is a HVAC van.
When you first said it, you said it was the size of the trucks, and I'm saying.
Big trucks.
Yeah, and that's.
That have equipment on them, same thing, yes, that's what I said. So, the library one.
So, a van that passes you on the highway that has HVAC stuff on it, it's different than a van that passes you on the highway that has library stuff?
Yeah, the ladder could fly off of that truck, would not, ladder's not gonna fly off on the library one, is it? No, so that's, that's the difference in it, there's equipment on those trucks, there's not equipment on the library one, is there?
I don't, I've never seen the library trucks, so.
Well, you're using it as the, as the other example, so I assume that you would know, so that, I mean, that's my whole point with that one.
Okay.
You're gonna have a problem regulating vehicles.
Okay, so are we going through the list and trying to talk about this, or are we gonna like talk about not regulating vehicle, I didn't think that that was talking about it.
Well, there's gonna be a lot more that's gonna regulate vehicles.
CD, I was talking about concerns with the, the neighborhood again, and you're gonna have vans, whether or not they're outside or inside, storage of equipment will be on vans, so.
I have another question about the topic, we go back to vans if it becomes more relative after I ask this question, okay? My question is, I don't know anything about the heating and cooling business, uh, plumbing services and repairs, my concern is about um, environmental impact, chemicals, um, air, water, it free, all that, I guess, I don't know what freon is.
Yes, that's what you do with.
Is there anything in that, in number seventeen, that would have a negative impact, or a potentially negative impact on the environment?
Yes, I just said freon.
No, I can't see it.
Kristen says freon, I don't even know what freon is.
Well, freon is, i- if it escapes, that could be bad, so, it's like.
Is it a highly regulated business?
There are laws and regulations that prevent that, I mean, I don't.
Well, I, same thing with trains, that has.
Okay.
I think a minimal, it'd be, it'd be conditional, yeah.
Conditional, is there any reason to say no? Aside from vans?
Ladders that could fly.
Ladders that could fly off vans.
Conditional, right?
Huh?
Conditional?
Conditional, is there any reason to say no?
Not from my perspective.
Any, any, Bob?
It's not research and development, but.
It's got an intent, we're not, we're not doing that yet.
They could be trying out newer conditions.
Yeah, we could, all right, so we're gonna say conditional, are you okay with that, um?
Yes.
Okay, all right, janitorial services.
Seventeen was a conditional.
Seventeen was conditional, number eighteen, janitorial services.
Well, that goes to your chemicals, I mean, I.
Yeah.
So, that's a no.
I mean, according to your concerns, I would think that you would say no on that, but I.
I'd say conditional.
Could be a mighty made company too, right?
Oh, now, opened my mind.
Yeah, but they also carry or store cleaning products.
Let's see, we got the applicant saying something.
For janitorial services, we thinking about cleaning services, and me as an R, I think I'm bringing actually cleaner uses compared to the same laboratory or in these services, in my view, janitorial uses are actually cleaner uses if looking from an environmental perspective. Imagine what we're doing in, in labs, we testing, if, if environment is gonna test, easily receptive of the chemicals.
So, can we put conditional on that, so that you would have to come in and say that?
I'm probably okay with that, I'm just.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, that's a good point.
Okay, conditional it is, thank you so much, number nineteen, is that even still a thing?
Yes, cuz Bryce locked himself out of his car.
I, I thought everything was smartphone. Is there any reason to make that conditional or to say no?
No.
So, it's a permitted?
Yep.
Okay.
Hey, we got one.
Woo-hoo, number twenty, manufacturing, assembling, and repairing of electrical, electronic products, components, and equipment, conditional use.
That sounds like research and development today.
It does, doesn't it, and it doesn't sound like anything I'd say no to.
But they have it as conditional, so we'll leave it at that.
But they have it for conditional?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Do you wanna remove the conditional?
We're not there yet, okay, um, is there any reason that we need to put a condition on it?
Well, they already have it.
I know they do.
I think it needs to say.
Oh, are you asking, should we take it off?
Yeah, should we permit it?
No, I thought we should take it off, I think it should say conditional.
Conditional?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, number twenty-one, food trucks, retailer businesses, storage of trucks and trailers inside the building only. Um, we had someone from the public actually bring this up, so, uh.
Indoor storage, this isn't food, food court.
Right.
Concept, this is someplace for.
Just holding the trucks in there, in their.
Joe's Taco.
In the garage.
To park.
Park.
To a parking place.
So, they probably have storage in their facility, right?
Yeah.
I would imagine it.
Cuz they're.
Truck, they would have bigger products.
A distribution facility or whatever.
Intent question.
Intent question.
Intent question.
Can't we just put storage of trucks and trailers and leave it at that?
What's, what's the, what's the, what's the intent question?
Well, you're opening yourself up for.
Whoa, hell is that research?
A million times.
It's not, none of this is. What you want.
Researching, uh, different food tastes.
They're inside.
It's a, it's a mixed use, let's just get over that, or recognize. It's a, it's a mixed use, let's just get over that, or recognize it.
I'm I'm okay with reclassifying it, it doesn't seem like that's what we're charged to do here.
Well, the key to that is that that nothing's gonna be stored outside, so he's saying mobile food trucks and trailer businesses, but they have to be stored inside, no outside storage, so people aren't gonna be looking at a line of food trucks laying out there.
Let me ask a question here, 'cause I I've seen it from the map, I've driven by, I just don't know how visible this research park is from the surrounding community.
Depends...
The residents.
Is it visible?
Is it visible?
It sits back right relatively far, but...
The whole neighborhood that's right across the street from it, it's right there, but those houses back up, it's the back of them, they don't look straight out.
So, the ones that are gonna probably be the most visible are the new Walnut Ridge, people in the back.
Yeah, they're gonna back up.
Um, there are folks along, there's a a full residence along the, uh, east side of it, um, there's a whole plat across the road.
Yeah.
Um...
And you you say their house is back up, but you spend...
He's number nine, where the school is going.
Yeah, but you spend most of your time in your backyard, not in your front yard.
That's where the, that's where the new plat school.
Oh, that's where the new plat school, and where's the school going?
That's going farther.
They wanna go on the...
Hopefully nowhere.
Further, further?
There it is, on the other corner.
Pending, a pending budget.
You can't even, it's not even on, showing you, but...
No, it's not, okay. Number, so are we ready for number, what did we decide about twenty-one, permitted?
No, yeah, it's just storage, I guess, right?
I I'm fine with permitted.
Permit it?
Yeah, that, the the local resident questioned that one.
They did.
'Cause they didn't want a food court type of thing, this.
Yeah, but this is not a food court.
Right.
This is just storage.
I don't think she really cared whether or not...
Okay.
They had food trucks doing a rally, I, for limited periods of time, I think she didn't want a bunch of trucks sitting outside, and this says inside only, so...
Yep. Okay, so good, permitted?
Yep.
Permit it. Number twenty-one permitted, that's where we are, Mr. McDonald.
Got another P.
Number twenty-two, office warehouse, ten thousand square feet or less, uh...
That's what it looks like, from Indian River.
Yeah.
And look, you can see the fill-in sign right there, fifty, fifty.
Oh, yeah.
But for every potential conditional, if it's filled, there may be another building such as a ten thousand square feet or less office warehouse.
Yeah, when you have this office warehouse, ten thousand square foot, over, under, is that buildings that are already there, or is this new development that you're... Existing buildings?
So, buildings that would be new would come back in for a, uh, site, specific site plan approval.
So, I I need more clarification about that, so these are already existing, why, it's already permitted? I mean, why is it on here?
I'm saying the building is already existing, it's not a new building, you're correct.
If they came in and wanted a new building, that would be a site plan.
Yeah.
They just wanna use their existing buildings for that use.
They don't need a plan approval for something they already have, so this is just a use.
The the general use of having a small office and then having a spot to put whatever it is that they are doing is probably the most sought use right now, and that is one of the most important uses for us. And when we look at the existing uses, it it's not clear, we think it's available, and so this is one of those things where we said this is, you know, especially these smaller ones, 'cause that's that's, there's a lot of people looking for this office slash warehouse space.
I have no problem with...
So, that, you know, tho- those are pretty important ones for us.
Twenty-two or twenty-three.
So, permit them both?
Well, I mean, they already have conditional on twenty-three, so twenty-two, I I'm fine with under ten thousand square foot and conditional use of over ten thousand.
Are there facilities today that are larger than ten thousand?
Um, K B R is larger, but they're predi- predi- predominantly office and lab in the back, but they're existing.
Another one like in the middle right there, that one looks pretty big.
All right, so...
It's an engineering firm, they're pretty big tenants, we inherited it, but they've been there for years, I would say.
So, permit twenty-two and conditional twenty-three?
Yep. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Physician services?
Permit.
I heard a permit, anybody else saying anything different? Printing services.
That's one of these, you say, do they exist?
The what?
Do those exist?
I'm sure they still exist, uh, minimally, but...
Um...
It it may already exist if that's what duplicating and mail service is.
Yes.
It was just, we were thinking that's the same thing, but printing service seems, you know, if you say, oh, you have a duplicating service? I'm not really sure that some that's...
I bet you that was like the old school like Xerox, like...
Okay, Kinko's.
Kinko's, yeah.
So, this is more of a clarification of a use we think is already there.
Yep.
And so that's why it's just a modern term if you want to talk about these things.
I know.
I'm okay with it.
Any, any kind of issues with it?
Okay.
Nope. Permit it then, twenty-five?
Permit. Public buildings, including community center buildings and libraries.
That's straight off the two A table.
That's straight off the table?
Yep.
Real estate and related services.
I I think that's good.
Yeah, well... Recreation facilities and customary accessory buildings. Conditional.
I'm not sure about the real estate and related services yet.
Okay, wait a minute.
Yeah, it's it's on the table.
Yeah, we think it falls, if, I'm sorry to keep talking.
No, 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 you're fine.
Please, it's okay.
There there isn't existing you, zig...
Yeah, it's, it's...
Real estate and development management related services.
It's, it's on table two A, it's there.
So, but the the question was, is real estate and development management the same as real estate, which is general real estate type of work? So, we weren't really sure, but it's an office with people who sell product, basically.
Okay, I agree.
Okay, so...
So, twenty-six, we approved the library's permit?
Yes, and twenty-seven?
Permit.
Permit, twenty-eight.
Conditional, I think.
What would you do to that, like a recreation facility, is that like a rock crawling building, like what would you do, like what's a recreation?
I don't know, I think it's conditional, I'm gonna tell us what you're doing, because we did the same thing with the health spas.
It's so vague, regu...
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd say conditional.
Okay, sign painting and manufacturing.
Conditional, all right, well, yeah.
I don't know, I...
I don't know, but that has to do with things for research.
I don't like any paint, even being close to, I don't like it, but it's okay.
Yums.
Well, making those signs, if you do those vinyl signs, those are, it's a pretty chemically processed, I'd prefer that.
I I just say no.
No, Anthony, no.
On the sign painting and manufacturing.
Anthony, no.
Yeah, I don't know what goes into the manuf- manufacturing of sign.
Nope.
We'll make it easy on you guys, we'll say no too.
Thank you.
There we go.
Give them take things for two.
This is work.
Veteran veterinarians with kennels, non boarding.
Yeah, interestingly enough, that's on the table, but we had a resident that wasn't too excited about that.
I think she said she was okay, she just didn't want the doggy day park, and she definitely didn't want them outside and spending...
Barkin'.
...the day, yeah.
So, do we wanna put a conditional on that?
Yeah, we won't put a conditional on that, 'cause even if a vet doesn't do boarding, they could have an overnight.
Right, after surgery, whatever.
Okay.
We have to.
And to hold them until they get to them, I mean, they may be outside.
Right.
Wholesale distribu- I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You good?
Yeah.
Wholesale distribution, number thirty-one.
I have, that's kinda going back to the twenty-two, twenty-three.
What do we do with them?
But find the way they are.
Conditionals? Yeah, but if you're distribution, that calls for again, going back to big trucks, so... Especially if you have over ten thousand square feet, is that like an Amazon distribution facility, a smaller scale one?
Oh, you're talking about big trucks, food service, those big food trucks.
Kind of splitting here is, I don't know how that's different than twenty-three, twenty-two and twenty-three.
Well...
Yeah, I mean, under ten thousand square foot, I mean, I I'm fine with the way we did twenty, uh, two and three, also doing that for the...
We ended up saying...
They're both conditional, or no?
No, we did, one was permitted.
Yeah.
With twenty-two, the smaller one?
Yes.
Yeah, thirty-one would be permitted, and they already have it.
The under is permitted and the over is conditional.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Now, I think co-working office spaces, just like office...
By definition, it's a research park, isn't it?
I think it's probably one of the best ones I've seen on here. Permit it?
Yep.
Okay. Artist sculptor and composer studios.
It's on the list. Straight off the list.
It's straight off the list, number thirty-four is permitted.
Yeah, I think it was RP, is it?
No, it's O one.
What?
On the list.
Not RP, it's O one.
Yep.
Right, it's O one.
It's O one.
What's that?
It's O one, not, uh, uh...
On the list.
But I think it should be permitted.
Number thirty-four is O one.
Thirty-four is on two A.
Uh, under the O one.
Under O one.
Oh, yeah. So, you're saying it has to be under a an RP?
No, they're just, when you say it's on the list, that's what we're assuming, the RP one, but it's actually in the O one.
Yeah, we're just asking that it be added to this...
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure about that one, um...
You're not sure about artists?
That's true, and also composer studios, I mean...
Yeah, you think you're gonna make too much noise?
You don't think that, you don't think there's research?
You know...
Rock and rolls here is baby.
I had a recording studio one time, so I know it can get loud.
Well, maybe we make it conditional then.
Don't they typically soundproof them?
Well, yeah, sure they do, but I mean, if you're in a a think tank next door to the...
You're a garage band.
So, you you okay with conditional?
I'm okay with conditional.
Conditional it is, number thirty-four, conditional, any problems with that?
Nope.
Okay, number thirty-five, credit reporting adjustment and collection services. Well, people are getting our credit, no one...
That's, that's, that's by definition on the chart for RP, so...
It's on the chart, okay, permitted. Dental and dental laboratory services.
That sounds like R and D.
Sounds like, it sounds like radiation to me.
Well, not the laboratory, I mean, that, you're gonna do that at this.
Okay.
Well, I I'm fine with that, I mean, I don't know.
I'm fine with it.
Permit it?
Are you okay with that?
P.
Okay.
Detective and protective services.
It's on the list.
It's on the list, for O one, for O one.
It sounds like research to me.
Not research, but it's on two A.
It's on the list.
You're gonna study what's going on.
I'm okay with it.
Permit it, permitted anybody, what?
What, one of those, you said detective?
It's not with, uh, it's messes up alphabetical order, it's like in the middle of that.
Right, yeah, it's not under the RP.
It's under the...
No, it's on the O one.
It's on the O one. Um, let's see.
Oh, sure is, I thought it was...
What do you think?
I would probably, just out of an abundance of caution, um, maybe do a conditional on that.
On the detective one?
Help me understand.
What's your, what's your concern, I'm curious?
Well, my concern is, we made daycare conditional, imagine the daycare next to...
Okay, so this is a that kinda category then?
Pardon?
Yeah, I'm just saying, you're grouping them all in general, is that...
Well, no, I'm just saying detective, I mean, they're carrying guns, whatever, I mean, that's my, you know...
That's a good point.
Conditional it is.
I mean, they have firearms, you know, and if you have, that's why...
They might.
Huh?
They might.
They might, they may not, I mean, that's why I would say conditional on it.
Okay.
I mean, that's my thinking. You're good with that, conditional?
Insurance carriers, agent, and services.
I'm fine with that.
Yep, me too.
Legal services?
I'm fine with that.
Professional and membership organizations.
It's an oxymoron, right? Sorry.
I got no issues with it.
Um, welfare and charitable services, conditional use?
Yeah.
Good with that.
Co-working facilities, private office space with open flexible space used for shared lab works, oh, yeah, that's just...
I would say permitted.
That's perfect. Hmm?
Permit it?
Permit it, I think...
What's between thirty-three and forty-two, thirty-three?
Co-working office space.
One is more just the office space, the other one is to have the additional glass or something like that.
Has flexible space, works based on these basic business events.
Okay, do we wanna go back through and make sure we got the right permits?
Yeah, can, I think I've taken some decent notes.
I do too.
So, let me go through and then I'll say them, and then you guys, if you disagree, yeah.
Say yes or no, and you too, Mr. McDonald, if you hear something different than what we are saying, yes, different.
Before you do that, did we make a decision on number four?
Oh, number four, go back.
Let's just get that one figured out and then we'll go back and do them all, how's that?
Okay, appliance repair services, no outside storage.
I think we just make a conditional, in my opinion.
Number seventeen.
We do have somebody that does that.
Yeah.
Well, if it's conditional and you already have somebody that's doing it.
Well, anybody else that comes, but what I'm just saying, yeah, if they...
They inherited one that's already doing it.
Yeah.
So, just in the future, they...
So, conditional?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, Wendy, do your thing.
Okay. All right. Number one and number two, we were fine with, number three, change the conditional use, number four, change the conditional use, number five is okay how it is, number six is no, remove it from the list, number seven is, uh, change to a conditional use, number eight, nine, and ten are fine as written, number nine is remove it from the list, it's a no, number twelve...
You mean eleven?
Or, yeah, sorry, number, number eleven, contract, uh, construction, yeah. I got out of my own mind there.
Striking that from the list.
Yeah, striking that from the list, number twelve, uh, uh, and thirteen, we're both add conditional use to them, number fourteen is keep the conditional use, but strike everything after merchandise, number fifteen and sixteen and seventeen and eighteen were add conditional use, nineteen nineteen through twenty-seven were no changes.
Well, so, hold up.
Twenty-six was conditional, got printing services.
The public buildings, or printing services.
Was that twenty-five?
Conditional only.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, we put conditional.
All right, through what number, twenty-five?
Do you have twenty-five as being conditional?
I have it as permit.
I had it permitted, permitted.
I had it as permitted too.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so is that correct, nineteen through twenty-seven are all permitted as written there?
Are they as written?
As written, yes.
As written, yes.
Okay.
Twenty-eight would be add conditional.
Yes.
Twenty-nine would be no, we'll strike that from the list, thirty would be add conditional use, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three are as written, thirty-four would be add conditional use, Thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three are as written. Thirty-four would be add conditional use. Thirty-five would be as written. Thirty-six would be as written. Thirty-seven would be add conditional use. And thirty-eight through forty-two would be as written.
Correct, that's what I got. Everybody's. Thirty-five, we did permit. Okay, now. We have to take a look at the. Other list here, just be happy with what we've come up with, right?
Which other list, the zoning resolution?
Yes, those ten points.
Wh- where are you at in the?
Seventeen oh six oh nine?
Thing, seventeen oh six point nine, and we'll just go down one by one, okay? And this is, I know to a certain extent, a little bit of overkill.
Are you, you're doing it in the context of these uses that you just discussed, is that what you mean?
Um, I think so. I think some questions may come up that you might need to redirect me in my lane, back in my lane, in our purpose. But I think that's what we're doing. Okay, all right. Number one, the planned unit development complies with the purpose and the intent of the zoning resolution.
And the zoning resolution is what, what we're approving?
Well, now, so the PUD has already been approved, so it.
It's the PUD RP. Well.
It, it has been, I mean, so I think.
So, that's just check the box.
I think what you're looking at, when you look at this is, okay, in the context of the, because now these are modifications to the PUD.
Original approval.
Okay.
Do the modifications to the PUD comply with the purpose and intent of the zoning resolution? I think that's how you have to look at it.
And the zoning resolution just basically approved this as a, an RP PUD?
Well, our zoning resolution.
Without, without uses.
Right, but I think it also means generally the zoning resolution, Beaver Creek Township zoning resolution as well.
With undefined uses.
Well, also, you didn't find a, a use that wasn't in the resolution somewhere and add it in there. I mean, you, you know, we looked at adult-use cannabis last time, you didn't add it in there. So, you're not going against the resolution by adding something that's not allowed. That's another way of looking at that.
Okay, what are we doing for each of these? Just discussing?
We're just saying whether or not we see anything wrong with it.
Do you, do you need to take a vote on each of them, or you just need to make sure that we're, there are no issues?
We don't have to vote on them, but if somebody feels strongly that there's a problem, we need to say it.
Correct.
Okay. Any issue with one?
Uh, the only problem that I have, you just put me back in my lane every time if I'm not thinking this right. The intent of some of this doesn't seem logical to me, even though, and I know Dawn's already gone, wears her head. The intent doesn't seem like it's research and development to me, but that doesn't mean that I'm looking at this properly. Some of the uses that we just went through do not seem like research and development.
And will other people be able to come in and say, hey, I want to rezone research and development with all of this in it? Can people do that?
What do you mean, this property?
Like any property, like if someone decides they have another property.
They could do a whole different set of uses with it.
I want to rezone according to how it is because we've already done this.
You're asking, are we setting a precedent?
Yeah.
Yeah, you do not set a precedent because the PUD is specific to this site, site-specific.
It is.
So, if someone came in with another, requesting another, um, research park PUD. And wanted to go through uses, they would have to do the same process. They would have to go one by one, whatever uses they wanted.
So, one of the questions that I had, and it, and it doesn't apply to this number one, I don't think. But can, are there any examples where these services that we just talked about are approved in other locations of the unincorporated section of the township? There are, and they're under office, they're under the office one, or the, the office zoning, I don't know the name of it. The OA, the one that, that's on table two and it's O.
There's various uses that are approved at various locations.
Where they're actually across multiple.
Right, exactly. So, I, I'm just making certain that are they already in the unincorporated section of the township? And it, do any of those offer connectivity to housing developments and are, do they go into the school sections? And I don't know if this, this probably goes into number two. Because you're.
So, you're asking if there are other uses that are adjacent to residential uses or to res, or to schools within the township?
Yes, where there's connectivity between those, yes. Because isn't there going to be a plan for connectivity between this Russ? And this new school that's being proposed into the housing development, or is this going to be an isolated entity?
No.
No, that was when it was the, the prior.
Okay.
Yeah, no connectivity.
No connectivity, so there's a precedence that we're not setting, that, if that's, even though they would come, they could still say that they do that, but we don't have that, okay. You follow where my mind went with that at all?
I think so. I can't get in your.
All right. Okay, so go, let's go to number two then, right? We don't have any problem with number one. Number two, health, safety, and general where, welfare. Of the present and future inhabitants of the township.
And weren't you considering that with each use as you went through?
When I was saying things like chemical and that sort of thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a question about prior to the OU purchase, was there fire and traffic study done? Do you know?
Prior to the? Or the Russ purchase, or the nineteen purchase, or the eight purchase?
Probably the eight per, well, my question then was, was it done in eight, and then did we do it in nineteen?
I did not see any evidence that it was done in eight.
Is it, was it done in nineteen?
In nineteen, it was not really a purchase as much as it was a bequeathment to, from Russ to OU.
OU. So, my question is, have any traffic studies been done? Are they in the process? Or, and has fire looked at? At the Russ development as a center?
Fire has, uh, and as far as traffic studies, there's currently kind of multiple ones going on. The school's required to do one. Um, the county engineer is in the process of doing a study for the roundabout at that location, so there are.
South of Beauberk and.
Yes.
But do they need to account for this?
This is will be accounted for because the, the, the access is already established at this, so if they wanted to establish a new access, then that would be different. But these current access points are already taken into account.
Future use?
Are you talking about usage and how that would expand?
Well, I know. The conditional uses, somebody comes in with a conditional use, you guys may say, we need a traffic study.
So, having this list of conditions is advantageous to that process, for the outcomes of that process.
Because obviously, something's going to have to be done with Indian Ripple in the near future. I'm in a two-lane road that, I, I don't know what, when it's going to happen, but. I think with a conditional use, that'd be something that we would have to require would be a traffic study, or even now, meet with the engineers.
So, the conditional use ones catch, capture that, but the ones that are permitted don't, right?
Yeah.
Well, but, what, I think what he's saying is the access points from, from Indian Ripple are already there, those aren't going to change.
We're talking about traffic congestion to what is already there, we're not talking about adding.
Well, and, and also, we have existing buildings, and I'll.
Let him in a minute, but let, you guys finish.
So, you have existing buildings as well that are already there that kind of establish your footprint of what can be within those uses. So, and that's to say, they will come in and they say, we want to build a new building because we have another warehouse, office warehouse use.
Yeah, so that's not my point. My point is you got underutilized.
Right.
Facilities today. If you fill that up, you're going to have more traffic.
But in OA, when it was approved, you have the same facilities that were there with industrial uses.
I, I can add the point.
Yeah, come right in.
It's okay.
So, if that we filled in as, uh, only laboratories and dense, dense office use. That's actually would be more heavy on the traffic compared to what uses we're bringing here right now. Let's say, in this office, we can fit fifty people. If we're talking office warehouse, it's going to be only probably three people, four people. Because it's not, it's not going to be as dense. So, in those uses, from my perspective as developer, the way you see, it's actually bringing less traffic. Compared to who we're bringing just only as an office as, as intended.
I mean, that's a good point, but then again, with our conditional uses, you know.
You have to come back with.
As a research center now, it's a, a traffic problem between seven-thirty and five o'clock at night. Well, now we have gyms and everything else in there. I mean, it becomes from seven-thirty to midnight.
But you, but you got it covered under conditional, right?
Right, that's mine.
But does, will, will conditional say you have to look at parking spaces and all of that again, on traffic impact on traffic?
Well, we would look at those with every permit that's going in and out of there as far as parking spaces.
Definitely not parking anyways for all this stuff in there already.
So.
Especially daycare, if you're going to do that, you definitely would need more parking spaces.
And what about environmental impact? We've looked at safety. I, I think we've covered safety pretty good.
I think we did environmental as well when we went down through here. From my perspective, I was thinking environmental. You mentioned a few things in the environmental area, unless I'm mistaken.
What about water? We haven't talked about water. Is there any change in? Water flow, all of that. We're not in floodplain, right?
We're not changing the ground at all. We're just changing the uses that are there. If we come in and we say we want to put a new building, then that's going to be right up your belly button because that's the site plan approval, that's the process.
I mean, that's an existing structure, so whatnot.
All right, I just want to make sure we're thoughtful for this.
And they would already have all their utilities to those existing buildings, so.
Hopefully that it meets everything that they need, and otherwise, it's not really our purview, it's somebody else's to get all that arranged.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Conditions requirement, number three then. Are we good with number two? Because I think I am. Okay, proposed zoning and conditions and requirements incorporated within the ro- resolution approving PUD zoning district provide for minimizing impacts on the surrounding development.
Again, I think, wasn't that sort of what you guys were keeping in mind as you went through the list?
I think so.
I agree with that.
I think we've covered that.
Yep.
Okay, we didn't talk about trees and buffers and stuff like that as it starts to grow.
I don't know that, that, from what they're applying for here, though, in terms of.
Do we need to worry about it?
Uses, that they can, that that's really something where can, we can change at this point.
You're still politely putting me back in my lane, I love it. Okay, number four, the site will be accessible from current or planned public through fairs and adequate to carry traffic which will be imposed upon them by the proposed development. We've kind of talked about that, right? Any, any questions?
We've talked about that a lot, yeah.
Jeff?
It is what it is.
And it will be what it will be. Okay, sarah, sarah. Impact on public services and facilities, it can be mitigated by building design and benefits which will accrue to the township in public, we just talked about that. Same with utility services, population density and non-residential uses are or will be available to the project. We did seventeen oh five, didn't we? Proposed complies with applicable requirements and conditions of seventeen oh five, and that was the whole process that you went through, right? And we all, and we've established that that was followed properly, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Each individual section or sub-area of the development, as well as the total development, can exist as a functionally independent environment.
This is the weird one.
In the alternative.
That's my favorite topic.
And in the discretion of the township, adequate assurance has been provided by the applicant into the satisfaction of the township. That such objective will be achieved.
Once again, no new buildings. You looked at this for use.
Right. There's no sections, we're not building new sections or things like that.
Right.
Okay. And any permitted conditional accessory are excluded from, to specify the proposed PUD are based on the findings in accordance with seventeen, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. We talked about that, and I don't remember what we said.
Well, I mean, I think essentially, that's what we were just doing now, is when you went through that list, is your, your, because you were looking at that, those things in conjunction with the tables and.
It just still seems odd that that's not in there, that that research park is not in there, but I'll let go of it, it's no big deal.
This section was probably never.
And.
All updated at the same time, and that's going to be part of this.
Okay, so that's an outcome that you can put on a list somewhere, right?
I have a large list.
Just one. The planned unit development can be substantially completed within the time specified in the schedule of development submitted by the applicant. Well, gosh, if we would make a decision tonight, it could move on, right? Okay, all right. I am satisfied with the process, with everything that we've done, and we need a. Motion that sends this forward. Dawn, help us with the words.
Word on to the trustees, is that what you want?
Yes.
Correct.
To accept the conditions as. Do we have a new list?
To accept the proposed uses as amended, and we went through there and read them all into the record.
Yeah.
So, I think that's all you need.
Okay, did you get that, Melissa? What he just said? Yeah, we, they will, but if you, if you say that again, one of them can repeat it.
To accept the list of, of proposed uses as amended.
For case number seven, eight, nine dash two.
Yes, you want to try it?
Oh, you're, she's, she doesn't already have it?
She's waiting for one of you to say it, not me.
Yeah, one of us hasn't said it.
Make a motion that we approve as amended, case number seven, eight, nine dash two. The major modifications to previously approved RP, RP PUD.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, any more discussion?
God, no.
No glues coming out of this horse. You may, um, call the vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Horton, yes. Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
And Ms. Stalter?
Yes.
And in the future, Andy, I just have a question. Um, when we have cases like this that refer, because, you know, once we send these resolutions to the trustees, we never know. What they decide, if they accept us, or they change them, or whatever, but, you know, I would appreciate having. The resolution that the trustees pass when we're considering something, so we know exactly what they did, what our recommendations were, what the trustees finally decided.
A feedback loop.
Yeah, basically. I mean, is that possible to do that? I mean.
Go to the meeting.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, I, I was coming into this kind of blind.
Oh, you're talking like, like with the, the, the old ones on purview cases?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're changing the, from fifteen to another forty-two uses or whatever, but I'm looking at it, and I'm like, I don't know what the fifteen uses.
Oh, so you, it would have been helpful to have the original.
Resolution, you know, that's all.
Understood.
So, you're going to kind of compare like this is what was decided and here's what they're asking, that's all.
This, this case was very challenging for some of those original.
Right.
Documents because the, I, I spent the first, Melissa, what, almost a month trying to find Russ research documents in boxes and. On drives and everything else, so I got a little, got a little off base there, but I understand what you're saying.
I guess I could look up the trustee minutes, because just like our, the last case we had.
But I did have something like that and I should have sent it out to you, I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, once it leaves here, I never know what happens with it, what the trustees do, and I guess I could get.
So, what is the feedback loop?
Pardon?
So, what is the feedback loop?
Look at the website. Right now, it's look at the trustees.
Is that it?
Minutes, I guess.
I think we're going to get a staff report.
What, what, what I can, would do as we move to future meetings, you know, uh, after we've had a trustee's, you know, for instance, they're going to have a public meeting. Or public hearing on Monday for the, uh, adult-use cannabis that we spent a lot of time working on. So, for next month, uh, I can report back on what the outcome of that was.
Just to copy their, their resolution, so we know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Someone comes to us, we know what they have decided.
Super doable and, and a good suggestion.
Maybe I'm going into the second part of the agenda tonight, I don't.
I think it's a good lead-in. I think it's a good lead-in.
Well, thank you.
Are you guys okay?
Yeah, as long as I can get my stuff.
Oh, sure, it's right here.
It's ours now.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And is the, is the airport satisfied? Is the airport satisfied?
Yes, ma'am.
Him, Jerry?
I, I will report to the board.
Hey, Jerry.
And you were quiet, I don't know who you are.
Had there that they looked at, do we have a copy of that? Okay, we do. Okay, I was just going to say that might be helpful in the trustee packet, yes.
Yep, that's, that's what I had an exit for.
Thank you.
Hi, I hope I didn't abuse you this time.
Uh, Monday, it would normally, not this Monday, I'm asking for the next Monday, yes, yeah, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, something in there.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi. My feet are cold. I've been cold the whole time.
I noticed I've been.
I'm whiny.
Well, we're almost there.
I know. So, what do we have to do for this discussion?
Basically, the, excuse me, the biggest thing that you have to do is decide, uh, have to elect a chair, uh, whether you want to keep Anne and give her the boot, do whatever you want to do with her. Um, and who runs the chair, or who runs the meeting in the chair's absence, and is there anything else? Like you've already said, Bob just moved into kind of a segue there of like, hey, I'd like a report back on, you know, what happens, any other types of things that you'd like? As part of your package, your whatever, so, it's just part of your annual reorganization. So, I guess probably the first thing you should do is take a look at who you want for chair.
Somebody can nominate or more than one person can nominate?
Nominate.
Nominate anybody.
Yeah, nominate away.
You can self-nominate.
I nominate Anne.
Okay, there's a nomination.
Before I do that, do you want to?
I will, I will spend my time on this. I will continue to serve.
I don't think there's anybody better suited to do it.
Did you second, right?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I mean, did you?
Does anybody else want?
I said, yeah, I agree.
You don't necessarily have to second, is there any other nominations?
Does anybody else want to do it?
Actually, we typically do it as a motion and a second.
We can have, we can have a standoff.
No.
A debate?
Does anybody else want to?
I say arm wrestle, rock, paper, scissors.
Okay.
I second the nomination for Na- for Anne, for not Ma'am, for Anne.
So, we have a nomination, so then you, do you ask if there's any other nominations?
Uh, any other nomination?
I, the only other person I'd nominate would be Jim Hill, and he's not here, so.
Yeah, okay, so that's it.
Why wrestle him?
You have a motion and a second with the only nomination, so I guess you could probably have a roll call.
Agreed.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
And Ms. Stalter.
Do you vote for yourself?
You can, or you can abstain. People do it both ways.
I will abstain, it's okay. Just seems, this seems nice.
So, we need to know who in, in Ms. Stalter's absence would, would run the meeting.
Can we do Jim, even if he's the alternate?
Well, no, because of the way that it. I'm trying to think of a B.
If Anne was gone, he could fill in.
He could, he could.
I guess.
Can we realize a vote for him without him being here?
Well, heck, yeah, that's how you.
Didn't have me say.
He'll learn, he'll learn.
Would you be comfortable running it?
Oh, that sounds fun.
Okay, well, then I nominate, I'll nominate Jim Hill. He'll need chair's absence.
I'm sorry, who'd you nominate?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Jim Hill? So, you want to nominate Jim Hill to?
If I'm not here.
Is that possible?
I don't think we should do that.
Well, I'm thinking through how the, I think the policy says that if somebody's absent, then he would, or an alternate would take the place. Now, I guess the only time that would be complicated if it became that we got, actually had applicants and got a second alternate, because then your alternates.
Alternate.
Alternate as to when they sit in, is the only thing.
Well, can't we control for that with a, with a?
If there's no restriction to having Jim Hill act as the, as the, what, what's the term, alternate?
Yes, for the chair in my absence.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great choice.
So, can we suspend that alternate alternating rule if in the event that he?
By naming him specifically?
Yeah, by naming, well, by naming him the chair specifically in my absence, because I just keep being absent until it's solved.
Well, then, my question is, uh, I'm not all for that, but this is all still confusing to me as far as the alternate's role.
Well, she's absent, somebody has to come in.
Well, just like tonight, Anne's the chair. Or no, say she wasn't here tonight, so Jim's the chair, and we continue this case. Till the next meeting.
Then we have to make Anne the alternate.
Then.
He'd have to chair.
Well, then Jim, Jim would come back anyway because you really need to finish off that.
Because she wouldn't be able to vote on it.
That wouldn't be appropriate for me to do it.
He was on it to begin with.
Now, under the new rules, and, and technically, I think that's how the statute says it's for you not, or our resolution say, because if you didn't participate in the first half, you wouldn't.
Because you not be, it might not be privy to.
Two cases, second time, Jim is the chair for that, and then as soon as the next case, if Anne is here, she steps in as the chair.
That's how it would work, yeah.
Is that how that works?
Well, I think it sounds doable.
Yeah, like I said, I think the only complication becomes if at some point we have a second alternate.
Yeah, what we can do without that.
And then, uh.
Yeah, we'll deal with it.
Does Jim want it, though?
Does, then do we need to change the?
Just saying.
He can always say he's not available. I mean, we'll figure it out. I, I will figure it out, don't you think?
I, I'm okay with it. I think it's a brilliant idea.
It's fun.
But that's just the board. But that's just a board.
I think that's part of the board's process and procedures that they have to.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would be. You're just, that's who you guys are just naming as who's gonna do it in the chair's absence. I don't think we need to do a motion and a second and all that for that.
Change in meeting structure or agenda format. Okay, you guys. I, where is this part coming from? Is this?
It's just if you want to.
This is just the, what was listed in that, in that board thing, if this was the time to address it, the, the, the rules, uh, the policy, the board policy packet that you.
Did not sign.
Correct.
What you got?
I signed it.
Well, that, that's what I was, my question was, you know, I, I still have, you know, as we discussed, and I, I don't know what the final outcome of that was as far as.
You're the only one who signed it.
Speaking as public, why can't we, in a meeting like tonight, if Jim Hill would've been here? He should ideally be sitting up here with us and we can say to the public that this, Mr. Hill is our alternate, he's going to hear, have a voice. But he will only vote if necessary, if we don't have.
And the reason that you, the reason that, that you don't do that, and the problem with potentially doing that is? You essentially have a. No matter who it is.
Right.
Somebody that is participating in deliberations in? You know, potentially influencing the board and thoughts and everything, but is not a voting member for that particular case. And so that's why it should be those people that are? Doing the vote, being the ones that are deliberating about it. Again, as a member of the public, anybody can speak.
Right, but, you know, put time on it, the time constraint is, is what the issue is, you know.
And that, because if, if there was a, if we had a contentious case in which somebody ultimately then filed an administrative appeal, say it got? Turned down, it filed an administrative appeal, and one of the things they could then, it could be an argument to be made, is that somehow it was? Procedurally, uh, a, a process violation or due process because there was somebody who was? Part of the deliberations that was not part of the voting board.
Dawn, we functioned erroneously for years then?
Apparently.
I mean, is this linked to the O R C? That's what, like, we really got hung up on this.
Well, see, the reason is, is, okay, so it's not spelled out specifically in the O R C. But what happens is you see things over time as cases come out and things that people attack in the process. And that's one of those things that people will attack in the process, in terms of, you know, who's, who's making the decisions? Who, why are they making the decision?
Into that.
How are the decisions being made?
That point, I mean, again, I say, you know, we're recommending more. We have no, all, the trustees are the ones making the decision.
Well, what's the difference between Jim giving him ten minutes and having a room full of twenty people speaking against something, but each get five minutes? I mean, they're still influencing us as much as Jim would influence us. So, and so is it just the timeframe that you?
No, it's, it's had nothing to do with the timeframe. It's.
I understand your point.
If you're not part of the pers- the body that's voting, then you should not be part of the deb- deliberations. And, I mean, like you said, all of the public are influential. I mean, that's why they come in.
I've got a question. I- is, is there anybody else here that hasn't eaten dinner yet tonight?
I, I never. Would you like, are you saying table the rest of the discussion for our session?
I already said that we should've ordered pizza like an hour and a half ago.
I agreed with you.
I, I just heard, um.
A motion?
A motion, sort of. Yeah, I was, I think it was a motion, Jeff, will you wanna repeat it?
Um, I motion that we table the rest of the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
Or.
Do you have, does anybody have any?
Or do we want a work session to do it?
Whatever, either a work session or not.
And that, just very quickly, I mean, I think the point is that, that you all as a board have the ability to, you know? If you want to, and I think we talked about this when we had sort of that meeting, is there are certain things that you guys can dictate as a board in terms of your process here. And so the question is that the, at the beginning of each year, we do, just like the trustees do, a reorganization and then you address? You know, if there are rules, process, those kind of things.
Maybe you wanna change your standard time limit to five limit.
And maybe there's not anything you wanna change. That's, that was just the whole point.
Those are just examples that, that were in the book.
So I heard him make a motion to table it, and then I just said, what about a work session? Table it to another, it's already in the, it's already an open meeting, so we might as well.
We do have a February.
If somebody wants a second and table it for more discussion.
We do have a February meeting, though, um, uh, Tractor Supply Company has put in for a minor modification. For their P D to add a garden center, um, outside, so.
Flowers.
Yeah.
So it's not February sixth?
Yes.
Okay.
That next month.
So we'll have time to discuss a few more topics on this? Okay.
So you can think through that.
Do you wanna second that motion, somebody, so we can just say we're gonna discuss, okay? Alright.
So that's the motion to table the rest of the agenda?
The re- yeah, I think so.
What about the approval of the minutes?
My feet are cold and.
Did anybody, I mean, we tabled those last time, those first two sets of meetings to give you.
But we don't have twelve, five, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And, and I actually haven't read the minutes.
Okay.
So, a- are they in an email that you sent?
Yeah.
Okay.
The first two. The second one's not done yet.
If we're not in a major violation, I'd like to maybe hold it off for the next meeting.
Fine. We've addressed it, so that's all we really need to do.
Okay, we covered the chair's absence, those these last three bullets, but.
And, and those last three bullets, just to reiterate.
Did we ever vote on Jim Hill?
We don't have to vote.
Don't have to.
Oh, we're gonna just table it.
Those last three things, I mean, as far as spending time thinking about them or whatever, if you're fine with how it is right now, just come back next time and say, we're fine with how it is.
I mean, and, and that may be what it is.
Yeah, it's fine. Just think about, you know, those things.
Okay.
There, those, uh, those I put on there, because they were out of that board policy that those were the things.
That's what I was trying to figure out. Where did these come from? And then I was trying to, I was trying to figure out if you were trying to implement some changes that was making your life easier.
No, it says the, in that, in that board policy, it says the board shall initiate a board annual board reg- organization. It was, should include the election of the chair, and these other questions were under there. So they're just from that. That's it.
You get to vote for a table?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?